April 21st, 2021, meeting of the Franklin Township Planning Board. Franklin Township is operating under a declaration of state and local emergency due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. And it has been determined that the public's attendance at meetings of planning board poses risk to their health, safety, welfare. Therefore, this meeting has been relocated from the council chambers at the Franklin Township Municipal Building to a virtual meeting format. And is being conducted utilizing virtual remote telecommunications equipment and with the directives of the state of New Jersey. The relocation of this virtual meeting of the planning board was posted in township's official newspaper, the Courier News. On the township website and through doorways in the municipal building, this news detailed the following means of public participation in this remote meeting. Either by link to the virtual meeting via WebEx or a call-in number for those without internet access. Public inspection of application materials was made available via the township website and/or appointment. And/or by appointment in the municipal building, formal action may be taken at this virtual meeting. As a reminder to board members, please mute yourselves unless you wish to speak or to provide a vote. Please withhold questions until all of the applicants witnesses have finished presenting, at which time I will ask the board to comment. Following instructions are for public input. For those members of the public that are watching via WebEx who wish to speak, there are two options. You can press the raise hand button. To use this feature, click on the participants icon in the lower right corner of your screen, which will open a new participants window on the right side of your screen. In the lower right-hand corner of that window will be a hand icon. Click on that hand icon. Or use the chat function, either use the default, which is everyone. Or chat to Mark Healy, do not send a message to Christine. As she is unable to review messages during the meeting and do not use the Q and A. As that section will not be checked during the meeting. For those members of the public that are listening via the caller number who wish to speak, press star three. At the appropriate time in the meeting, township staff will announce a name on meet you and you'll have the opportunity to provide comment. Please provide your name and address. If providing a statement, the board attorney will swear you in. After speaking, if you're on the WebEx, press the lower hand button. Or if calling in, press star three again. So with that. Let's go for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Christine, you call her all?
Councilman Chase. Coral Howe. Mahir Rafiq asked to be excused as well as Mustafa Mansoura, Jennifer Ragnow.
I'm here.
Charles Brown.
Here.
Robert Thomas.
Here.
Carol Schmidt.
Here.
Sammy Chavon. And Chairman Rascini.
Here.
So first order of business tonight is minutes from the regular meeting of February 17th, 2021. I can have a motion for those.
Move to approve.
I will second.
Coral Howe.
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow.
Yes.
Charles Brown.
Yes.
Robert Thomas.
Yes.
Carol Schmidt.
Yes.
And Chairman Rascini.
Yes. And one resolution tonight, Executive Drive Investments LLC, PLN 20-00009.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Coral Howe.
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow.
Yes.
I'd just like to mention, Councilman Chase just entered into the meeting. Councilman Chase, I'll go back to you for a resolution.
Oh, on the resolution. It's really unclear whether we're granting a variance or for frontage or we don't need to grant a resolution for frontage because in some parts, it talks about the need for for a is a variance for lot frontage required as stated on page seven, number two, or not as stated on page three B. I think it got, the need got removed when we went from M1 to Business and Industry, but it's, it's not clear.
Yeah. Getting earlier. Yeah, Dr. Chase, you basically summarized why the language may be confusing. When the application originally came in, it was in the M1 zone with the change to the Business and Industry zone. The lot with requirement was changed so that the need for that variance went away.
That's what I thought was the situation, but the language is not clear.
Yeah, and I'll defer to to Peter to describe it further, but basically I believe that the intent was to put language to kind of cover both scenarios.
I figured, you know, it was a, it was a belt and suspenders kind of situation. The applicant filed under the old zoning when it was required. And then because of the change, it wasn't required. So technically, under the time of application rule, it could be argued that they were going to be required to have the variance. But for a practical perspective, they would have waived that requirement and said, we'll subject ourselves to the new zoning that doesn't require it. So it reads a little strange, but at the end of the day, they can, they can do what it is they'd like to do. And, you know, they've, we were either granting them the relief or they didn't need it. So we kind of said both, just to make sure that either way, if someone wanted to say one applied rather than the other, that we were covered.
So long story short, we can approve the resolution as written?
I believe so, yes.
Councilman Chase, did you want to say yes or no or abstain? Okay, thank you.
Still.
I'm sorry. Somebody still talking? Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Carol Schmidt?
Yes.
And Chairman Rascini.
Yes. So I see no discussion items, Mark, so we'll move into open public comment. So this section of the meeting is for any public comment on any planning issue. That is not the subject of a separate hearing. So the two hearings tonight, Ez Energy, Z Energy, however they pronounce it, and Bright Industrial. Will each have their own open hearing, so if you hear for either of those applications, please wait until their meeting is open for comment on those. So this is for any other general comment, I'll make a motion to open the meeting to the public.
Move to open the public.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, meeting is open to the public for general planning comments. Mark, let me know.
So just to remind the public, if you're calling in, you can press star three. If you're participating via WebEx, you can do the raised hand function if you have any general planning comments. Scanning the list, not seeing anybody raising their hand.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Make a motion to close the public comment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll move into our first hearing. EZ Energy NJ LLC, PLN 21-00006. Anybody here to represent?
First bringing in Mr. Paparo, and I'm going to ask him to let me know who else to bring in at this point, once he's, once he's live.
Sure, can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just going to try to, my video's on, great. Okay, can everyone see me? Excellent.
Yes.
Okay, if you could bring in Vincent Kelly, our engineer. And the second person is Lou Ionello, representative of the applicant.
Okay, they're both in.
Thank you very much. Good evening, board members, members of the public. For the record, my name is Joseph Paparo from the law firm of Porzio, Bronberg and Newman. On behalf of the applicant, EZ Energy NJ LLC. This application before this evening is a request for preliminary and final site plan and variance approvals. Concerning the property located at Two Riverview Drive, that's block 517.03, Lot 3.10, commonly known as the center school. The applicant is proposing to install solar panels on the roof of the existing school building. As well as carport canopy solar arrays throughout the parking areas. This site is located in your B1 zone. The proposed solar panel canopy accessory use has been deemed a permitted use. We do require a variance for the solar panels due to their location in the front yard. As an accessory structure, the solar panels are not permitted in the front yard. As you'll hear this evening from our civil engineer, the property is unique. It has three frontages on three separate streets. It fronts on Riverview Drive, it fronts on Apgar Drive, and it also fronts on Western Canal Road. Having three front yards, it presents a challenge to have any structures not located in a front yard. So we have requested the variance, setback variance for the canopy array. As far as the evolution of this project and the history and where we've come so far. There was an initial concept plan that was shared with the township as well as the DRCC, which has jurisdiction over applications within the Parkview. And based on some initial feedback, the layout was modified to remove some proposed canopy arrays that were encroaching in existing landscape buffer areas. So we took into account that feedback and made some revisions. That accounted for comments received from the DRCC as well as the township. Your fire department also had some early on comments regarding some of the proposed arrays in the parking areas that were located in drive aisles. The fire department wanted some clearing areas and wanted some of the proposed arrays removed. That change was also made early on to accommodate the fire department. So what you have before you this evening, board members, is a culmination and a result of that interaction with those agencies. The plan that you have before you still does require the variance to have the accessory structures located in the front yard setback. But again, this property is uniquely configured and presents some challenges. We also appeared before the Historic Preservation Advisory Commission on April 6th. The commission had no objections to the project as revised now that the solar arrays were honoring and preserving the landscape areas. Their initial comments early on were concerns over the view from the Delaware River Park area. So since that landscape area was now being preserved, they had no objections. They did offer two recommendations to us that I wanted to share with you. One was regarding our tree replacement plan. They encouraged us to diversify the type and species that were proposed. So we will be doing that if this board so inclines to approve this application. We will diversify and propose some species that are on the DRCC's recommended list and to present some altering species rather than the few that were initially proposed. Their second comment was to investigate whether or not some additional landscaping could be added along the curbing behind the parking area. Our engineer did look into that and I believe he is prepared this evening to share his response regarding that last comment. Other than those, we have received reports from all of your agencies as well as your planner and your engineer. We have no objections to those recommendations. Our engineer will go through and confirm on the record that there is no objection complying with the reports that we've received. Chairman and board members, that's an overview. There's no preliminary question. I'd like to call my first witness, Vincent Kelly.
Nope, go ahead.
Mr. Kelly, are you on?
Yes, I am. Kelly.
Let me just get to your video so I can see you. Okay, there you are. Mr. Kelly, you need to be sworn in. Mr. Vignola will take care of that.
You could raise your right hand for me. You swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Yes. You could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record, please.
My name is Vincent Kelly, and that's K-E-L-L-Y. My address is One Drury Court and Brick, and that's D-R-U-R-Y.
Thank you.
Mr. Kelly, for the benefit of the board and public, can you provide your education, area of expertise, and the licenses you hold, sir?
Yes, so I graduated with a bachelor's in civil engineering in 2011 from NJIT. And I am currently a licensed professional civil engineer in the state of New Jersey.
He's accepted. Mr. Kelly, you're affiliated with Colliers Engineering, correct?
That is correct.
It's accepted. Let me continue.
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Kelly, I gave a brief overview. I know you have some exhibits this evening as well as the plan set that was provided to the board and its professionals. Before you do go into any exhibits, we would need to mark those for the record. So I would just instruct you, when you do present something and you share your screen. Let's make sure we identify the sheet of your plan set and the date so that the board members and the public can follow along.
Okay. Can I request control to share my screen? Perfect.
Yep, you should be good to go now.
Okay. Let me know when you guys could see it.
Yep.
We'll see you.
Okay, so the first plan I would like to enter into the exhibits is the site plan layout. It's sheet five of 12. Originally dated 2/5/21. There is one revision date that looks like it was also 2/5/21.
And Mr. Vignola, should it be labeled that A1?
Just for the record, Mr. Paparo, the board's policy is that if we, if it's, if it's a plan that the board's already received as part of its packet, it doesn't need to be marked. Certainly, Mr. Kelly can identify what he's referring to. It'll make it easier for everyone to follow along. It's only those items that weren't part of the submission that was available 10 days in advance that'll need to be marked as exhibits.
Thank you.
You got it.
Okay. Mr. Kelly, this plan set is the set that was submitted to the board as part of this application, is that correct?
That is correct.
And again, this is sheet five of 12 so that the board can follow along that you're going to be referring to?
Correct, so this is sheet five of 12. As Joe mentioned, you know, this is the existing center school located at Two Riverview Drive. There is two access points along Riverview Drive. One on the west side of the building, one on the east side of the building. And as he also mentioned, we also have frontages along Apgar Drive and West Canal Road. Kind of is in the the front slash rear of the building. As I mentioned, it is the existing center school. And, you know, the proposed operations will remain as such. What we're here to, you know, discuss with you guys is that we're looking to provide four solar channel canopies in the rear parking field. As you could see, it's along Western Canal. You have one here, you have two, second one over here, a third one here, a fourth one here.
Mr. Kelly? Yes. I'm sorry to interrupt you, just for the record so that we can have a clear record. When you, when you're identifying something on the plan, you say here, it may be difficult for people to follow along. If you could just maybe use some directions, north, south, east, west?
Sure, on the, the west corner portion of the property, along the, the back row of the parking stalls along Western Canal. There is four proposed solar canopies. Starting on the west side and then going all the way to the east side of the full parking stalls along the back row. And then there also is one additional solar canopy that's proposed in the middle island on the west side of the building. These, as Joe mentioned, the original sketch did have these solar canopies kind of overhanging the back row of the parking and the timber guide rail that's in the rear of the site. And it was, you know, kind of recommended to us that, you know, the existing landscaping in the rear of the site provides a good buffer screen from the site from, you know, West Canal and, you know, the canal itself. And it would be beneficial if it remained as this. So we took that recommendation, you know, and went back and modified our design where the canopies now slope or kind of face inward towards the building. And no landscaping along West Canal Drive or, sorry, West Canal Road will be eliminated with the proposed development.
Mr. Kelly, one, one item that I wanted to circle back to, I mentioned in my overview that some initial comments that we received from the fire department was a request to keep certain areas clear for their staging and equipment purposes. Can you identify which canopy has been ellared back, so to speak, to honor that request?
Yes, so if you guys are looking on my screen, basically. It is the canopy right here.
And that would go on. Going from left to right, that would be the second.
The second, correct, that would be the second canopy if you're starting on the west side of the building. Now that, as Joe mentioned, the, the fire official had a recommendation for when they have the fire truck, for them to be able to use and access the ladder. The truck would park right here, but the canopy basically would be impeding if they were to be using the ladder. So we pulled the canopy back so the fire truck can, you know, access it in case of emergency for the building.
Great, thank you. And Mr. Kelly, I noted that we are requesting a variance. Can you identify where these structures are technically encroaching into the front yard setback?
Yes, so along West Canal Road, we were, we're technically requesting two variances. One for the front yard setback and then one for the side yard setback. So again, with the second canopy to, from the west side, there is a front yard setback requirement for 50 feet where we are providing 38.6 feet. And then for the side yard setback. We were providing a, sorry, excuse me, there's a 25-foot yard setback for the side canopy, which is on the most western portion of the site. Where we're providing a seven-foot side yard setback.
And, Mr. Kelly, the reports, you've had an opportunity to review the reports from the township planner, the township engineer, the board engineer rather, as well as the remaining township departments?
That is correct.
Do you have any issues complying with those requests and recommendations as a condition of approval?
Oh, I do not.
Mr. Kelly, one other item I want to just circle back to here, the you have an exhibit, if you could, that we did submit to the township, which has been uploaded to the website and according to the requirements, I believe it's the exhibit of the photo simulation?
Okay. Is this the exhibit you're referring to?
Sure. This exhibit. I believe it's on the website as exhibit A1. Mr. Vignola, should we continue with that?
Sounds like a plan, Mr. Paparo. We'll call this A1.
Okay, great. And, Mr. Kelly, this exhibit that's been marked as exhibit A1 was prepared by your office and it's a photo simulation taken from the canal, is that correct?
That is correct. So there was a photo with a, you know, real life view from the canal, looking inward towards the, the site. And it was photoshopped in basically the look of the, the canopies along the back row of the parking. You know, this, just for reference, this is West Canal Road. Obviously, this is the, the canal itself. And you could kind of see looking into the site. We purposely took the picture during fall and winter time, so you could kind of see even, you know, while you know, the leaves are falling off the trees and everything like that, there is a pretty good, it does provide a pretty good buffer screen. And, you know, if you're passing along, you're not, you're not going to really notice the, the canopies sitting on site.
Mr. Kelly, it's my understanding that there is a substantial grade change from this site down to Western Canal Road, is that correct?
That is correct.
So, so the traffic would be below this site, is that accurate?
Correct, that is correct. You could actually see a car in the lower left-hand corner. Basically, this would be eye level looking up. As he mentioned, there is a significant grade change. It's basically three to one from the existing tow slope all the way down to the roadway. It flattens out to the roadway and then has another steep grade going into the canal.
And, Mr. Kelly, your testimony was that this, this photo was taken during winter, fall, winter, when there were, where there were new, no leaves or any other foliage built in. Is this, is this a worst-case scenario in your opinion?
Correct, it is definitely a worst-case scenario. Obviously, you know, during spring and summer times when the trees have bloomed, this will provide, you know, adequate buffer screening. And even in the, the winter months and stuff like that, I mean, mostly no one's going to be really in the canal anyway. But even when you're driving along for the small stretch that you are passing by the, the site. You, you would, my opinion, would barely notice the, the canopies if at all.
And, Mr. Kelly, I, I mentioned that the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee recommended that your office modify their tree replacement proposal to diversify the species, is that your understanding?
That is correct.
And do you have any objection to doing that?
Um, so we did, we did look into the feasibility of putting some trees along this, the back row to kind of supplement some of the trees that are out there. It was.
I'm sorry, Mr. Kelly, to interrupt you, there's two separate issues. Let's, let's talk about, the diversified, the, the first comment from the historic committee was to diversify the species.
On site.
On site, any objection to that issue?
No, no objection to that issue.
Okay, now you can move into their request that we investigate adding additional landscaping behind the parking lot. I think that's what you were going with, with your next statement.
That is correct. So they did ask us to supplement some of the trees in here to provide a little bit more of a buffer. We, we did talk with our landscape architects in-house, you know, who do this stuff all, all day for a living. And there's a few issues that, you know, mostly, well, due to the, you know, steep slope and everything, it would be hard to kind of plant trees along the along the frontage for West Canal Road. I know some of the trees are existing today and, you know, obviously are living and functioning that way. And that's kind of the, the other point as well is that if we were to supplement trees in here because of the steep slopes and the existing vegetation, they kind of would be fighting each other to, to live. And either the existing vegetation may die off and the proposed vegetation may not actually take and, you know, in turn die off as well. It was recommended that we kind of leave the existing trees as, as is. So we didn't run into that scenario that, you know, if we did try and supplement it, that maybe the existing or the proposed wouldn't take and you would kind of be left with less vegetation that was there today.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. One, one other issue I'd like you to address. I, I mentioned in our overview that the fire department, one of their initial comments was to scale back, for lack of a better word, the second array that you've identified. It's my understanding from discussing this with the applicant that they've received some additional information from their structural folks that actually install the canopies and calculate the energy to be generated. That the loss of those panels could impact their productivity. And I believe there is a investigation or your office has investigated a potential to locate some additional panels in the parking area. And I believe that's the second exhibit, exhibit A2. If you want to just describe that to the board and we can explain the purpose of exhibit A2.
Okay. This is the exhibit, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So what's on the screen is, uh, has already been submitted as exhibit A2, but for the record, uh, Mr. Kelly, what, what does exhibit A2 depict? What's the date on, and the title of that sheet?
Mark it for my record as well, so the title of the, the exhibit is Additional Array Exhibit. And it was prepared for 1621. So as, uh, Joe mentioned that their, basically the, the client, you know, went back to. I guess, let's start with the, the fire, uh, comment, so obviously with the fire comment, we need to comply with them. As they, uh, you know, they, they want to make sure they have a safe and functioning site. So we had to eliminate a few, uh, the overhang here and a few panels as well. So to kind of get the, the recommended and required energy, uh, that's going to be serviced by the panels and some of the panels on the roof. That, uh, an additional canopy array, uh. Would be required, and this is, this is the location that we determined, uh, it to be. Is in the, the western portion of the site and it's in the closest parking row, uh, on that side of the building.
Mr. Kelly, this new proposed array that, uh, you're discussing this evening, that's in the parking area. Is that, does that require any variances, is that located in the front yard setback?
That is not located in the front yard setback or any other setback and would not require any variances.
Mr. Vignola and Mr., I know Mr. Healy's on as well, um. The, our position on, on this, uh, additional. Array, uh, is that since it does not require any variances. The code actually, in my understanding, the code allows solar installations to be approved administratively. If they don't trigger any variances, and, and the reason why this application is before you. Is because we have no alternative for the arrays that are located along. Weston Canal Road other than for them to be in the setback area. With regard to this additional array, um, since it could technically be approved administratively. Six now, six months from now, and it wouldn't be before the board. We thought it would be, you know, prudent to present it this evening, and if the board were inclined to approve the project. Uh, to be aware that this additional array was being proposed. In full transparency, rather than if this was approved as is, and then you see this additional array out there, we thought that that would not be. Uh, a favorable way to present it, so I know you're seeing this for the first time, uh, this evening, um, and I understand if there's any concerns on that, but. We, we, we've made the decision to include it in tonight's presentation because again, it doesn't trigger any variances. It's not something that on its own would have to come before the board. Um, and it was something that was just brought to the applicant's attention, the need for it, once the calculations were. Finished, after removing the panels that the fire department requested, so. Again, I'll defer to the chairman, Mr. Vignola, and, and your planner as to whether or not. The board is comfortable, uh, reviewing that or considering that. Um, but we did want to, again, in full transparency, included in tonight's, uh, presentation.
I appreciate that, I, I, I have no problem with it, um, you know, unless there's something administrative issue, it, it makes, it makes sense.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's, that's all I have.
Yeah, so, yeah, my, and I'll defer to Peter as well ultimately, but my opinion is that. He's correct, that if this did come in, um, without variances, it would, it could be approved administratively, the way that we normally do it, and we have approved. A number of solar, uh, arrays in parking lots administratively is through the administrative site plan process. So we could go that route for this one panel, or, uh, if the board was comfortable to approve it as part of this application. My recommendation would be that, uh, the, the approval would, would need to be conditioned upon review by township staff, uh, this. I don't anticipate, I'm not sure what the issues could be, but fire prevention, for example, has not seen this nor the engineer. Again, I don't know what issues could possibly pop up, but they have not reviewed it, so I think that would, that would need to be a condition at a minimum. Other than that, I would defer to, uh, to Peter.
Everybody's referring to me, it's wonderful, um, I, I, I similarly don't see an issue with it other than the one that, that Mark's just brought up, which is. The, the location of these panels hasn't been reviewed by any of the departments. And inasmuch as the fire department seemed fit to advise the applicant that, uh, a portion of one of its arrays needed to be modified in order to make sure access was sufficient. They're going to need to, to pass on the location of this array as well, um, you know, and that would be something that would occur if it was done administratively. Uh, six months from now, or if it was done as a condition of this approval, so it's, uh, one of those pick your poisons, uh, either way, they're going to get a bite of the apple.
Yeah, no, I mean, that makes sense, uh, and I think it, it also, I, I appreciate the applicant. Doing it and telling us as part of this hearing, just because even though it could be done administratively later on. You know, appearances, uh, may not, as you noted, be, be that great, uh, if it looks like it's sort of something tacked on at the end. We're all aware of it, we mostly condition anything on satisfying staff reports anyway, and certainly, I think. The advice that Peter and, and Mark gave us in terms of doing that for this particular, um, array, but since it doesn't affect variances. Uh, doesn't really affect the bulk of what you're bringing for us tonight, that you, you have no choice but to bring before us because of the variances. It, it, it totally makes sense to me, so.
Hey, thank you, um, one last, uh, item, this is less for Mr. Kelly, but, uh, we haven't talked at, at all about the, uh, array that's on the roof. I know that's sort of a, uh, less consequential, uh, it's not really a, a site plan issue, it's on the roof, um, again, that would be fully. Reviewed as part of the permit process, um, but there is a array on the roof of the building that was part of our application, our, our, our original application. I guess just to have some testimony on the record, Mr. Kelly, uh, the array, uh, there is an array proposed for the roof of this structure, is that correct?
That is correct, there is, uh, proposed panels on, on the roof, uh, they're, you know, mostly, uh, lying flat, a slight tilt to them. Uh, but not much that you're, you know, you have existing, uh. Equipment, you know, AC and stuff like that on the roof, it's, it's very similar to that nature.
And Mr. Kelly, my understanding from discussing this with the applicant is that the panels on the roof, due to the height of the building, would, in his opinion, not be visible from the streets, is that your understanding as the engineer?
That is, that is correct, I, I don't believe it will be visible from, uh, ground level.
Uh, Chairman and Board members, I had nothing further, uh, for his direct testimony, Mr. Kelly, I, I would offer that, uh, Mr. Iannello from Easy Energy is on the call and, and he is. Uh, the solar expert, uh, so if there are questions about how solar works or the amount of energy that's going to be generated for the school. I'm happy to offer him, uh, to provide some additional testimony, uh, Mr. Kelly obviously handled the technical aspects of the application, Mr. Iannello can certainly answer. Uh, questions regarding, you know, solar productivity and the need for these panels and the like of those types of questions, so I'll defer to your. Wishes as to whether or not you'd like to hear from Mr. Iannello next.
And I think the board's pretty well aware of that, and I think we, we've always supported this kind of project in terms of. So we're, you know, we, we ask for it on warehouses, we ask for a, a lot of the warehouses we're getting now, uh, for us, so, um, you know, I think, I think we don't need it, uh, need his testimony right now. Um, what other witnesses do you have?
Uh, Mr. Yeah, Chairman, that was, that was our, our last witness, um, we have no further testimony at this time.
So, Peter, I'll defer to you, but if, if you're anything like your partner. You probably want some, some testimony on the record from a planning perspective.
I, I, I am sure that if we ask Mr. Paparo the justification that the applicant's proposing for the variance relief. He, he can give us a, a, a brief recitation of, of the justification.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that, um, I'd be happy to do that, so, a- as I mentioned in my overview, this is a unique property, the characteristics of this property having three front yards, according to your code. Provides some what I'll call, uh, property hardships on the applicant, essentially, if to comply with the code, there is no ideal location because your code prevents or prohibits. Accessory structures in front yards, so that would rule out anything on Weston Canal Road, anything on Appgar Drive, anything on Riverview Drive, so. Having a property with three, three front yards, uh, limits any kind of development, uh, in, in general. Um, an accessory structure prohibition, uh, you can see why this variance, uh, is, is warranted. One of the justifications or the reasons why I think this board can grant that relief is what you heard from Mr. Kelly's testimony. They, uh, preservation of the existing landscape buffer along Weston Canal Road, moving the canopies out of that encroachment so that that can be preserved and honored. Uh, that'll provide some screening and mitigation to these structures that are located within the, uh, prohibited yard. Uh, and that's usually what you look for when you have a setback violation, is how can the violation be mitigated? So you have existing landscaping, you have a steep slope, according to Mr. Kelly, with a substantial grade change from the motoring public on Weston Canal Road. They would have to essentially look up an embankment, look through existing vegetation to see these galvanized, uh, structures, so. I think when you consider the location, the uniqueness of the property, uh, those factors, I believe warrant the relief. Uh, the applicant's, uh, willingness to honor and preserve the landscape buffer and not encroach or remove existing vegetation. I, I think demonstrates, um, the, uh, ability to mitigate any negative impacts. And for those reasons, uh, I would respectfully request that the, the variance be granted.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, if I could offer just a few comments on that, uh, I, 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 and as, as the board planner. Um, I'd say I'd, I'd certainly agree with all of the points that he just raised, uh, there definitely is a, uh, C1 argument to be made in terms of the property being uniquely situated with three. Road frontages, I, I think that's a relatively unique situation in the township, I think they've also raised a number of flexible C or C2, uh, variants. Situations, I, I think you, you definitely have it, um, a, a public, significant public benefit by the use of the solar energy. Uh, I don't see any substantial detriment to the public, uh, as indicated, they're preserving the existing buffer along Weston Canal and the DNR Canal tow path. And I don't see, so I don't see any substantial detriment from the front yard setback variance, nor do I see any from the side yard setback variance. Looking at the aerial photograph that adjoins a, a detention base and on another property, so basically you have one, essentially one utility adjoining another utility, so. I really don't see any public, uh, detriments whatsoever, um, and they're certainly, whatever detriments are certainly outweighed by the benefits of so, the solar energy that's being provided.
Thanks, Mark, um, I'll open it up to the board for any questions, I don't have any, so. If anybody else does, um, now's the time to raise those before we open to the public. All right, hearing crickets, I will make a motion to open the meeting to the public for comment on this here, this, uh, application.
Second.
All in favor? Hi? Meeting is open to the public, Mark, you can let us know if anybody wishes.
Okay, so, reminder to the public, if you're participating via WebEx, you can use the raised hand function. Or if you're calling in, you can press star three, if you wish to speak, since this will be both questions and, uh, comments. The board attorney will swear you in, will ask you to indicate your, uh, name and spell your last name and provider address. For the record, that will apply, the same comment I'll make for the next hearing, um, for this hearing though, Mr. Chairman, I'm not seeing anybody raising their hand.
Thanks, Mark, we'll make a motion to close the forward portion.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, so, uh, if there's no more board discussion, um, I'll entertain a motion.
Before you start, can I ask one quick question? There's a report from the. The DNR Canal Commission. And their recommendation is not to go forward, not to approve.
So, yeah, I mean. I guess I'll ask this to the.
Yeah, we can certainly, yeah, we can certainly respond. Are you referring to the report dated February 2nd?
March 25th.
Need to defer to Mr. Kelly, Mr. Kelly, do you have a DNR report dated March 25th?
If you give me a second.
Sure.
Mr. Paparo?
Yes.
If it helps, the DNR addressed it to a Derek Jordan at Mazer Consulting, so that. Just so you're aware of who the DNR sent it to.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
While Mr. Kelly's looking for that, I, I would, without seeing it, I, but I would, my response as the applicant's attorney would be. Obviously, that's an outside agency that we would need to satisfy before this project could ever advance. Um, so if there is something that's open that needs to be resolved with them, it could be the species of trees, it could be some other component. Um, we would certainly need to comply with that as, uh, like any other agency, so I don't necessarily think it would impact what this board. Does this evening, um, we would not obviously be able to move forward without their final approval, um, if that alleviates any concerns.
Okay, it's just skimming their report, um, I, I hadn't read it in detail only because, like you say, it's, it's, you, you have to satisfy, and I. I don't think they have all of their backs exactly straight about the nature of the project, so I, I don't. I don't think you'll have a hard time straightening that out. But, like all resolutions we make, we would can, make them contingent upon satisfying all staff and outside agency reports. Staff reports, obviously, you've addressed those with the project tonight, conditions, any motion on staff comment on the additional array. And of course, satisfac- satisfaction in the outside agencies. And obviously, if those for some reason significantly change the project, we'll leave that before us.
Correct.
And one thing I will say is, we do, this township staff does track that, we, we do make sure that all applicants. Receive their necessary outside approvals before they're allowed to proceed.
Okay.
I, I do have the letter open if you want me to kind of clarify it, uh, but I agree that, you know, we, we are still seeking approval from them and, you know. If you guys so wish to grant us approval, obviously that will be a condition of the approval itself, um, but, uh. As one of the board members kind of pointed out, it didn't seem like the RCC kind of understood. The, the application a little bit, because they were, they were talking about us. Going over like existing vegetation and everything, but they didn't realize that the canopies were higher in the air. They thought that we were encroaching on ground cover, which is not, not the case with us, you know, keeping the existing vegetation back this way.
Yeah, I didn't get a sense from reading the report that they quite got it, so, I, I think they're right.
And Mr. Kelly, it could be that the plan, it, it, the dimension lines are a bit deceiving you, we have the dimension lines, it looks almost like that's the canopy, um, maybe with the next revision. We can move the, the dimension line so that there, or maybe darken the canopy so that it's pronounced a bit more so that they can see that it no longer encroaches.
Yep.
Yeah, well. For the record, that tripped me up a little bit as well when I was looking at the plans.
Okay, you and me both, Mark, I, I, it took me a while to realize that that's not the canopy, so maybe we can dark it, darken the, the font. Or do something to, to make it pronounce that it's not the canopy, that's the dimension.
Yes, we'll, we'll definitely clarify that.
Sounds good. All right, so, once again, um, if there's no other board comments, um, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Kelly, could you drop your screen now, please, sir?
Uh, yes, give me a second. There we go.
All right, so I'll go, I'll go ahead and make the motion, um. I'm going to make the, make a motion to approve, continue to find. township staff review of the additional solar array. And conditioned upon all outside agency reports. And we'll, we'll make a motion to approve with the variances that the applicant requests for minimum front yard and minimum side yard setback.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, just real quick, the historic commission's recommendations, I'm assuming that would include. They have to do the tree replacements as recommended. And then the shrubs behind the curb, are you waiving that?
No, I mean, I, I think that, I think that that's something the applicant indicated they could do. I, I agree with their, I, I would waive any other replacement on a steep slope. But they agreed to diversify what is replaced. And so I think that would diversify what's on site. So I think that's reasonable, but I would waive the, I would waive the steep slope planting because I agree with the analysis of landscape.
Believe Mr. Thomas seconded.
Yes, he did. Is it okay to, to call the roll now, Mr. Seamy?
I'm with me.
Okay. Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Health?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Carol Schmidt?
Yes.
Chairman, our senior.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you very much. I just wanted to say a special thank you to your staff, Ms. Woodbury and Mr. Healy for their assistance throughout this application process. It was extremely beneficial. So thank you and thank you, board members, for your consideration this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Christine and Mark do a fantastic job. Um, okay, so we move on to Bright Industrial Canyon NJ 102 LLC. PLN 21 00005, and I'll give everybody a few minutes to get dialed in. There you go.
Okay, so I believe I've brought in everybody except the attorney who sent a message that he's having technical problems. He was going to log back in. So we're waiting for Mr. Lanford.
Maybe I could ask counsel at this point. It appears from a list of owners that Mr. Lanford is the owner of block 523.03 lots 13 through 28. Is there anything in procedure that argues against the attorney for the applicant being a neighboring owner, property owner?
No, because he's, he's representative of the applicant. He certainly, I mean, it would be more to the applicant's detriment if they thought he had some prejudice against the application, but I mean, the, the mere presence, he's, he's not testifying, he's just representing.
Okay, just thought I should ask.
Frankly, I'll, I'll bring it up to him again when he comes in because certainly he should be here to address that question as well. So he's aware that it was made.
As possible, of course, that the ownership list is outdated, but.
Okay, so Mr. Lanford should be joining us momentarily. There we are, we see you.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize, just as you were finishing up the prior application. My computer froze and I had to go start another computer. Mr. Seamy, can I proceed?
Please do, Peter.
Actually, Mr. Lanford, just before you start, before you came on, Councilman Chase indicated that you appeared as a property owner within 200 feet of the applicant's property. I don't know whether that is correct, but if it is, he indicated and questioned whether or not there was any conflict with you representing the applicant. I indicated I was not sure whether you were in fact a property owner, but I did not see an issue. I wanted you to be aware that that conversation took place and see if you wanted to offer any insight into that.
For a very short while longer, I am the, an adjoining property owner. The property is going to be conveyed fairly shortly and I'm aware, obviously, of the application. I'm in preparing notices. I served the notice upon myself and I have no objection to the application.
And I see no issue with you moving forward as counsel to the applicant.
Correct. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Peter Lanford appearing on behalf of the applicant. I actually was listening to the last application when Mr. Healy indicated that that was a unique piece of property because it had frontages on three streets. I am now able to top that because I have a property that is before the board this evening that has frontage on four streets. This is an application for site plan approval for property known as block 521.02 lots 1 through 4 and also blocks 523.03 lots 35.05, 35.08 and 44 through 66. The properties in question are an existing warehouse that has been vacant for a period of time and three single family dwellings that front on Elizabeth Avenue, which are not permitted uses in the zone. The purpose of this application is to demolish the single family dwellings, demolish the existing warehouse and to construct a new warehouse of approximately 355,000 square feet with related parking and trailer storage. The only variance that we are seeking is the number of driveways. The, your ordinance allows only two driveways. We are proposing five. You will hear testimony both from our traffic engineer and from our site engineer as to why we think this is appropriate, given the size of the site and given the fact that we do front on four streets. I do intend on calling this evening, hopefully only three witnesses, which, which are Mr. Kavinsky, who is our site engineer, Mr. Rhodey, who is our architect, and Mr. Paragoy, who is our traffic consultant. I also have available a representative of the applicant, should the board have any questions of him. But this is a fairly straightforward application. As the board is aware, I've been here almost on a monthly basis with similar warehouses with similar issues and concerns. Having said that, I would call Mr. Kavinsky, please.
Did anybody hear me?
You can. You could raise your right hand for me. You swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, all truth and nothing but truth.
I do.
You could state your name, spell your last name and give us your address for the record, please.
Sure, it's Kyle Kavinsky, K A V I N S K I. I'm at 40 Main Street in Thomas River, New Jersey, 08753.
Mr. Kavinsky, you're a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey employed by Dynamic Engineering.
Correct.
And how long have you been so licensed?
For six years.
Okay, and you're. Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
He's accepted, Peter.
Thank you. Mr. Kavinsky, the plans that are the subject of this application were prepared by you or under your direction, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, Mr. Haley, can we share the screen with Mr. Kavinsky so that he can present his exhibits and help the board through this process?
Okay, you should be good to go.
Okay, one second. Screen I want to share is not coming up, one second.
There we go.
Okay. And Mr. Kavinsky, if you were listening on the previous application, if any of the exhibits that you are going to be relying on this evening in your testimony are part of our plan set, they do not need to be marked, but you should reference what part of the plan set you are referring to. If it's something different than what is in the plan set, we will have it marked.
Understood, yeah. So this first exhibit is aerial map exhibit, stated today's date, prepared by our office. It was submitted prior and on the website, so I don't believe you have to mark it.
Okay, and can you, in referring to this exhibit, which you have indicated is the aerial view of the project, describe the subject property as it currently sits today?
Mr. Kavinsky, if I can stop you, is this was something submitted with the applicant's initial submission package? Or is this is something submitted in advance of the hearing as an exhibit?
It submitted in advance of the hearing as an exhibit.
Okay, it'll be A1, just.
A1, absolutely.
Thanks.
No problem. And just again, to outline this, it's a color aerial of the existing sections of the site and the surrounding properties. For orientation references, north is to the right of the page. East is to the bottom of the page, south is to the left side and west is the top of the page. The site is depicted in yellow for visual purposes. As indicated, block, the law is located on block 521.02 lots 1 through 4. Block in block 523.03 lots 35.05, 35.08 and 44 through 46. The overall lot area is 26.87 acres and has frontages on Elizabeth Avenue, Wiley Drive, Belmont Drive and a small portion of Happer Street. The site's located in the B1 Business Industrial Zone. As indicated, there's currently four existing residential dwellings. Three are located right along Elizabeth Avenue and one is located just off of Happer Street. These will be removed as part of the application as they are, and they are existing non-conformant, non-conforming uses on the subject site. The name of the site is a 1,000, 1, 496,614 square foot existing warehouse facility with docking facilities and trailer storage located on the eastern side of the building as well as a large parking, a parking area located on the north side. There's currently been existing driveways throughout the, throughout the property going to the various frontages for all the existing uses on site. Additional open space areas as well as some wooded areas located to the south of the portions of the site.
And Mr. Kavinsky, are you familiar with what the surrounding land uses are around the subject property?
Yes, I am. To the north, we have the funeral home, which is located at the corner of Elizabeth Avenue and Wiley Street. We also have, I'm sorry, Wiley Drive, we also have Wiley Drive as well as the fire company, residential dwelling and a warehouse beyond. To the east, we have the Mavis Tire Shop. We have Elizabeth Avenue as well as Happer Street with residential and shop right beyond that. To the south, we have our wooded section of our property as well as the Franklin Commons preschool area right to the south and offices also to the south. And then to the west, we have Belmont Drive with wooded areas beyond. It's interesting that two newly approved warehouse developments are going on the opposite of Belmont as well.
Thank you, Mr. Kavinsky. Can now indicate to the board what we are doing with respect to the subject property?
No problem. I'm going to go ahead and go to my next exhibit. Can you all see my exhibit?
Yes, sir.
And, and that exhibit also was not part of the original plan set, but is a colored rendering of one of the sheets in the plan set, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah. This is the overall site plan rendering. It's dated today's date and prepared by our office. I'll go ahead and mark that A2.
Perfect, thank you.
No problem. And yes, this is a color depiction of our overall site plan that's within our site plan, overlaid with our landscape plan and colored for visual purposes. So anything in green or light green is open space areas, basins or plantings or existing wooded areas for, for the case for the smaller portion of the site. Anything in gray is, you know, parking rods, drive aisles. Any in the tan color is concrete. And then we have the orange in the center of the site, which is our proposed building. As indicated, we will be proposing to remove all the existing uses on the subject site and redeveloping the site with a proposed 355,780 square foot warehouse facility with 94 dock spaces located on the western, eastern portions of the, of the building. There will also be four drive indoors as basically every corner near the loading docks. 220 parking spaces, both located and separated by the building on north and south sides of the building. Those include eight ADA stalls and 51 trailer parking stalls located on the eastern portion of the site. The building and site plan were designed to comply with the use of all standards and parking requirements within the B1 zone. And as Mr. Lanford indicated, we do have frontages on four separate streets, which include Elizabeth Avenue, Wiley Drive, Elizabeth, Belmont Drive and Happer. Happer Street currently is more of a paper street tying in the existing single family dwelling nearby. We will be improving Happer Street to township standards according to the application. We will also be proposing two driveways to Belmont Drive, one driveway to Wiley Drive and two driveway to Elizabeth. As Mr. Lanford indicated, this is our variance that we're requiring for tonight is ordinance indicates no more than two drivers permitted. However, we are proposing five, again, due to the nature of the size of the property as well as our site having five, I'm sorry, four frontages. Our needs to separate the truck, trailer access points and the smaller vehicle access point separation. Our traffic engineer will go over truck access and circulation through the site to begin reiterate that. Sidewalks currently on the site, we're proposing two sidewalks, or sorry sidewalks along the southern portion and northern portion of the site adjacent to the parking, parking areas. As indicated, Mr. Healy's review letter, there was a need to provide some sidewalk along Elizabeth Avenue, which we will be happy to provide as well as providing access to refrigerants from that, that sidewalk into the site, the building. We will also. We will also, uh, will go with Mr. Haley to provide, you know, locations of any, uh, ride hailing shelters, or any, uh, electric vehicle charging stations, uh, trash will be, um, provided and collected in a compact compactor. Uh, it will be located within one of the loading stalls and be picked up by private hauler. Drainage for the site will be conveyed, uh, conveyed system and discharged to two above ground stormwater basins. One located along Wiley Drive, and one located along, uh, Elizabeth Avenue. Uh, both, uh, basins will be designed in accordance with the New Jersey Stormwater Management Regulations for both stormwater quantity, quantity, and groundwater recharge. Uh, utilities for the site will connect to existing mains located within Wiley Drive and Elizabeth Avenue. Uh, you'll also be installing a fire loop around the entire building with various, uh, fire hydrants protecting to that loop. We'll work with your fire official on a location hydrant such that. Landscaping for the site, uh, we will be maintaining a large portion of the wooded area, the southern portion of the site, to get, uh, eighteen existing there, as well as we're proposing, uh, thirty two shade trees, a hundred and forty one evergreen trees, and thirty shrub, I'm sorry, three hundred and fifty shrubs throughout the site. We will also work with Mr. Haley to provide some additional plantings, uh, to, again, to supplement the buffer adjacent to the loading areas, as well as, uh, providing some internal landscape islands, uh, with some planting. Uh, you know, again, help with our, our need for landscaping. Uh, we will also provide additional replacement trees on site. Any trees that we don't, uh, replace per the deficit, we will make a payment to the tree, uh, fund the township tree fund. Uh, and finally, the landscape, I'm sorry, the lighting, uh, we've provided, uh, day-to-day LED light poles and building mounted fixtures, uh, these are all downward facing, full cutoff fixtures, uh, and they'll provide a, uh, lighting uniform for the parking areas and illumination of driveways for safety purposes. Mr. Haley had, had requested we potentially reduce the mounting heights to twenty five feet, which we will comply with.
Now, Mr. Kavinsky, uh, one of the other comments in, uh, Mr. Healy's report, uh, dealt with Happer Drive and whether, uh, perhaps there should be a vacation of, of Happer. Now, in our plan, we have five driveways, and I know Mr. Paragoy will go into it in more detail, but certain driveways are basically for tractor trailers only, and the other driveways are for passenger vehicles or small delivery vehicles or small trucks. Uh, what is the intention of the driveway at the terminus of Happer Drive?
So again, Happer, Happer Drive, the intention is to allow the passenger vehicles to, or, or any vehicles, you know, smaller than a, uh, tractor trailer, to utilize that, to allow access to the, uh, the parking area and have direct access to Elizabeth Avenue, which is our main, uh, frontage.
And it is our intention to improve Happer Street to township specifications, is that correct?
That's correct.
Uh, and also, uh, as was indicated in Mr. Healy's report, uh, there should be some pedestrian, uh, connection from the building to the sidewalk, which we are proposing to construct along, uh, Elizabeth Avenue. Uh, would Happer Street be a source to have a public sidewalk along Happer Street, so that the employees who work within the facility can walk from the facility down Happer Street, down to the public sidewalk, to the commercial areas to the south?
That's correct, yeah, so that would be a, a nice access point for them to utilize.
Okay, and in the report, there was the suggestion that the street be vacated. Uh, and if the street were to be vacated, then, uh, the street would have to be divided, or the land that was, the bases of the street would be divided between, uh, the applicant and the adjoining property owners, which were both a residential property owner, and the, uh, Mavis Tire, is that correct?
That's correct.
And what would happen if the street were to be vacated? Would it be able to function, uh, uh, for us as an access point?
No, it wouldn't, a-again, we would need the, the entire area to, to be able to provide that access. Uh, if, if any dedication was not going to us, then, then we wouldn't be able to provide the access.
Okay, and again, very briefly, I know you touched on Mr. Healy's report in your initial presentation. Uh, and in his review comments, he has indicated to, to us that he feels that there are uh, ample opportunities to provide additional landscaping, uh, along the, along Elizabeth Avenue, along Wiley Drive, uh, the corners of the building, uh, and behind the stormwater basins, and will you be in fact revising your landscaping plan, uh, to address those comments by Mr. Healy?
Yes, yeah, we will work with Mr. Healy to, to determine where the best locations are and, and, and update our landscaping, absolutely.
Okay, and in revising the landscaping plan, uh, that would afford us not only the opportunity to put some shrubs and other things of, of that nature, but also to provide additional trees, uh, in those areas, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, um, the other, uh, comment that, uh, he raised and you, you sort of hit on it. Uh, we will be able to provide on-site some of the parking spaces, uh, so that they can be, uh, used for vehicle charging stations for electric vehicles, is that correct?
That's correct.
And also, can we incorporate at some points around the building, uh, bicycle parking, and also perhaps a, uh, covered structure, uh, for people who may be getting picked up or involved in ride sharing, so that they can be protected in inclement weather?
Yes, we can do that as well.
Okay, and if we provide those things, they would be in areas that are already impervious areas, and we're not creating any new impervious areas as a result of those changes, is that correct?
Correct, uh, you know, we, we would be under the requirement for the, for the, uh, for the zoning ordinance as well.
Okay, um, uh, you did discuss the, the lights, uh, and obviously the affordable housing fee we're subject to, um. You've also had the opportunity to review the CME report dated April twelfth, two thousand twenty one?
That, that's correct.
Okay, and that report consists of, I believe, eleven pages, uh, and there were some engineering changes that were requested uh, by Mr. Mazzy and Mr. Russo. Uh, can we comply with all the requested changes that are contained in that report?
Yes, we can.
Okay, and by making those changes, would we in any way substantially alter or change what the board is looking at this evening?
No.
Okay, um, the Health Department wanted to know about refuse, and I think you testified that it will be done, uh, in one of the, uh, loading spaces and would be handled privately, is that correct?
That's correct.
Uh, you also have had an opportunity to review Mr. House's report dated April fifth, two thousand twenty one, which is a revised report. Uh, and can we comply with everything contained in that report?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Thank you, I have no further questions of this witness.
Mr. Leffler, one, one additional thing, uh, in the CME review letter, they indicate some, some design waivers that, that I'd like to touch on real quick.
Oh, sure, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, no problem, uh, one was a checklist waiver for requesting a larger site plan sheet, uh, than twenty-four inch by thirty-six inch. Uh, again, this is, uh, the CME didn't have an issue with it, but, uh, we, we needed the larger seat to, to fit everything on the page. Um, so requesting that, that checklist waiver. Uh, in addition, uh, a design waiver is requested, uh, for the overall length of the loading area, uh, which the ordinance requires, uh, two times the overall length of the longest vehicle, which would be a hundred and forty-seven feet. Uh, whereas the, the project currently proposes a hundred and thirty feet proposed. Um, again, we, we've designed numerous warehouses throughout the state, and a hundred and thirty foot la, uh, loading area is adequate to provide access and circulation within the loading area, as well as providing, uh, truck turning templates to prove that it's true as well. I'm sure our traffic engineer can go into a little further, but I just wanted to touch on those.
Thank you, Mr. Kavinsky. Now I have no more questions of Mr. Kavinsky. Uh, Mr. Chairman, do you want me to go on to my next two witnesses, or do you want board questions and public questions of this witness?
Uh, no, Peter, go ahead, and, and we'll, we'll, we'll leave questions from the board and for the public until we're through with all of you.
Okay, I would like to call Mr. Rhodey, please, as my next witness, and after he's sworn, uh, perhaps we can share the screen with Mr. Rhodey and remove Mr. Kavinsky's exhibits.
Good evening, everyone, can you hear me okay?
Thank, I hear you, I just gotta find you. There you are.
Yeah, my, my, my camera's turned the other way for some reason, I don't know what's happening there, show myself.
All right, let's find you.
How about now? Sorry about that, folks.
There you are.
Hello, good morning, good, good morning, good evening, how we doing?
Good, Mr. Rhodey, if you could raise your hand, hand for me. You swear the testimony, going to provide us the truth, all truth and nothing but truth.
I do.
You could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record, please.
My name is Matthew Rhodey, last name is R O D I E. My address, uh, is six thirty-five, Settle Court, Swine, Georgia. And I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey.
And how long have you been so licensed?
Since two thousand eighteen.
And you are, I would offer the testimony of Mr. Rhodey as a licensed architect, Mr. Chairman?
He's accepted, Peter.
Okay, and you're employed by Arco Design Services, who, uh, prepared the architectural plans that are the subject of this application, is that not correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and, uh, are there certain exhibits that you would like to share with the board very briefly to show what the building will look like?
Yes, indeed.
All right, Mr. Haley, has the screen been turned over to him?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, can everyone see my screen okay?
Yes.
Wonderful, okay, building, building straightforward in terms of this design, it is a concrete tilt-up building, um, facing the west elevation, faces Belmont Road, with the north elevation facing Wiley Road. Um, it consists of multiple reveal patterns with color bandings of a neutral, uh, nature. Um, we can zoom in right here and show you that we have Sherwin-Williams colors that we have selected, um, that are of a pretty standard level, um, that range from origami white, potential gray, and downing slate of colors. Lighter tones and medium gray colors. Um, the, the, the consistent heights that we have here along the dock wall is forty-two feet, the top of dock face, or the dock face wall, sorry, with varying heights along the corner and side elevations ranging from forty-five to forty-seven feet. Uh, the entrances, main entrances of the building are to the north, are located on the north and south elevations. Um, the building is designed as a speculative warehouse, which means we do not know at this moment in time whether it's a single, comfortable user tenant. Um, that's something that will determine as the, as the building develops and down the road, as, as leasing, uh, equipment is placed. Um, with respect to anything on the roof, any mechanical equipment on the roof, at this time, we don't know where that's gonna be located, we still need to get done, I mean, the, the mechanical engineers. Once we've obtained that information, any screen that's necessary, we'll be sure to put them. Um, as of now, there are no solar panels that are placed on the roof. Um, the elevations with respect to, uh, okay, Kyle, I touched on, the elevations include a number of dock doors. Again, the west elevation facing, uh, Belmont Street, we have the partition of doors and an offset of knockout panels. Um, this version of the building may vary slightly with respect to the reveal size, um, as we are considering it to be a tilt-up building, a little more subtle design, but as, as the appearance it shows, the building will be very close, if not the same as what we see on the screen right now.
Okay, Mr. Rowley, do you have a colored rendering of the building to share with the board?
We do not have one at the moment.
Okay, um, but at this juncture, uh, the building will meet all of the height requirements of the zone?
Correct.
And although we do not have the exact location of the mechanical equipment, uh, because we don't have a user and their needs have not yet been determined, uh, can you state with certainty that all of the mechanical equipment will be located on the roof?
Yes.
And can you also state that, uh, depending on its location, if the mechanical equipment needs to be screened, so it is not visible from the four roadways that surround this property, uh, adequate screening will be provided, uh, around the mechanical equipment?
That is correct.
Okay. I have no further questions. I would like to go to my next witness, which is Mr. Paragoy. And I think, uh, with Mr. Paragoy's testimony, I don't know if he has the screen, or if we're gonna go back to Mr. Kavinsky, they're from the same firm, I don't know if we're gonna have the, put the exhibit back up.
Peter, do we need to put that elevation in this exhibit A3 for the record?
No, that's part of our submission package.
Mr. Paragoy, if you could raise your right hand for me. You swear the testimony, going to provide us the truth, all truth and nothing but truth.
Yes, I do.
You could state your name, spell your last name, and give, give us your address for the record, please.
Sure, my name is Craig Paragoy, P E R E G O Y, business address two forty-five Main Street in Chesapeake, New Jersey.
Mr. Paragoy, are you a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey specializing in traffic?
Yes.
And have you testified before the, either the planning board and/or the zoning board in Franklin Township prior to this evening?
Yes, both.
And have been qualified as a traffic e-expert?
Yes.
I would offer his testimony, Mr. Chairman.
Accepted.
Uh, if we, Mr. Paragoy, do you have control of the screen for the site plan, and you want me to give it back to Mr. Kavinsky?
Uh, either way, I, I can do it, I pulled it up.
Okay.
All right, he should be good to go.
Okay.
You see, uh, exhibit A1?
Mr. Paragoy, you prepared a traffic impact study for this project dated December sixteenth, two thousand twenty, correct?
Correct.
And can you indicate, uh, what you did in preparing that study? What did you look at, and, uh, what were your concerns in, in looking at this site?
Sure, uh, the, we did a traffic study looking at the operation of offsite intersections in the site driveways, and also the on-site circulation. Uh, I'll, I'll briefly go through the offsite stuff, uh, that was in the traffic report, without getting into an incredible amount of detail, but what we did is take traffic count at both ends of Wiley Drive, at Belmont, and at Elizabeth Avenue, uh, focusing on the weekday morning and weekday evening peak hours, it's the busiest time periods of the day. Obviously, uh, these traffic volumes are a little bit, uh, lower than you expect because of the, uh, COVID pandemic. So Summer Secany was able to provide us with some pre-pandemic count data, which would allow us to adjust our accounts to get what we call sort of normalized traffic volume, you've seen, uh, today. Uh, we projected traffic for the proposed warehouse based on the I T E Institute of Transportation Engineers trip generation rates. Uh, there's obviously an existing development on the site that is, or at one point was generating traffic, including truck traffic. We didn't take any credit for that, I assume this was just vacant land, because we wanted to look at a worst-case scenario, but obviously there's historically there, uh, both vehicu, you know, passenger vehicle and truck traffic. We added that traffic volume to the traffic counts that we collected for that peak hour, those normalized traffic volumes, and prepared analyses of the site driveways, Happer Street, uh, and Elizabeth Avenue, Wiley Drive, and Elizabeth Avenue, and Wiley Drive, and Belmont Drive, and compared what, what those levels of service, or how those intersections would operate with and without this project. What we found is this would have very little impact, we have no change in the level of service, meaning no substantial change in any of the delays. Uh, and that's accounting for the, both the truck and in the employee traffic, uh, with the proposed warehouse. So from a traffic impact perspective, certainly fits, certainly can work. Again, I can go in any more detail, or if anybody has any questions, but, you know, I know the traffic testimony can be a little sleepy sometimes, so I, I, I won't get into too much more detail on that. Uh, as far as the site circulation, I think that's probably the primary, uh, I think it's the only differential requesting here, is for the multiple driveways. Obviously, we have frontage on three primary roads, Happer Street being the fourth roadway, we have Wiley Drive, Belmont Drive, and Elizabeth Avenue. I think it's the only differential requesting here is for the multiple driveways. Obviously, we have frontage on three primary roads, Happer Street being the fourth roadway, with Wiley Drive, Belmont Drive, and Elizabeth Avenue. And what that does really is a couple things. It allows it to lay the site out in a very effective manner. And it disperses that traffic to those roadways. Instead of concentrating everybody at one point, it disperses the site traffic to the various frontage roadways, spreading that impact out a little bit, which I think is a good thing. Primarily, the key here is that we're able to separate the employee passenger vehicle traffic from the tractor-trail and the truck-loading traffic. We have on Belmont Drive, where centrally located, a larger driveway that would accommodate the tractor-trailers. And then the southern parking area is accessed via another driveway on Belmont Belmont Drive and via Happer Street. So employees who are working on the southern side of the building, parking on the southern side, have two points of access. And then similarly, on the northern side, employees can access Wiley Drive. To to get to that area, they could also come into the truck access on Elizabeth Avenue and can stay out of that truck court and access that parking area as well. And then this driveway on Elizabeth Avenue is the larger driveway that we have the tractor-trailer that. So only the Belmont Drive centralized driveway and the Elizabeth Avenue driveway that have the truck traffic, they're able to pull into the loading area without impacting the employee parking or passenger vehicle parking. So I think that lays out nicely and having those multiple frontages allows us to do that. And design what really is what the market's looking for. This is an excellent layout with employee parking on both sides of the building and loading on both sides of the building. That is ideal for efficient operation and and lays out perfectly, given the multiple frontages that we have and the ability to lay it out that way. We create a really efficient and safe and big good design for this property.
Mr. Paragoy, you're aware, as I indicated in my opening, that we need a variance for the number of driveways, correct?
Yes.
And we are in the B I zone, which has a minimum lot size of two acres. And if this were a two-acre site, probably two driveways would be very appropriate, correct?
Correct.
And this site is twenty-six plus acres, correct?
Correct.
And in your opinion, as a traffic consultant, can you indicate to the board what are the benefits? I think you've touched on them already, but just review the benefits of granting the variance for the number of driveways and why they make sense with respect to this project?
Yeah, again, a few reasons. They disperse the traffic, as I mentioned before, and I think the primary reason is that separation of the employee traffic and the truck traffic. I think that is well-developed in this plan and is able to work successfully. And sometimes it's a challenge on these properties, but it works successfully, given the amount of frontage we have and the ability to divide those driveways and spread them around on this fairly large site.
One other question. Obviously, this site is going to generate some tractor-trailer traffic. In your experience and visiting the site and knowing the interchanges ten and eleven. Which are basically to the north of us, what do you envision being the general travel direction of the tractor-trailers as they're either coming to or leaving the site?
Yeah, I mean, primarily oriented towards two eighty-seven interchange twelve, but Western Canal Road is accessible via Belmont to Pierce to Cotton Tail. And exit ten, you could take Pierce to Davidson and get on at exit ten. So you have two interchanges that are in close proximity, relatively easy access. And one of the, you know, reasons why this is an attractive use for this property is that easy access to two eighty-seven.
Okay, thank you for correcting me. I think I said interchange eleven. It's interchange twelve. Thank you for correcting me. I have no further questions of Mr. Paragoy, and that also concludes all of my witnesses.
Thanks, Peter. Open it up to the board for any questions or comments.
Mr. Chairman, if I could start, I think it may help some of the board discussion if I go through my report a little bit more with the applicant and get their their further feedback. And then again, that may help the board's subsequent discussion.
You want me to leave the plan up, Mark, or you would take it down?
Yeah, that would be helpful, actually.
Leave it up, okay.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. So I'm just gonna go point by point. So comment number one, I'm talking, I addressed the tree replacements ordinance. And I indicated as as you testified, and actually, I guess this would be addressed to the to the engineer. You know, I indicated six locations on the site that I thought additional landscaping could be proposed. My report recommended that you be prepared to specifically address this at the hearing, including testimony addressing the locations and quantities of additional trees to be proposed and appropriate exhibits. And and, you know, I do appreciate the fact that you said you'd be agreeable to working with me to work on these comments. But the reason why I mentioned that you that you should be prepared to address additional quantities and have exhibits is so that the board is understanding how you're going to react to this comment. I don't know. You agree that you would work with me. I don't know if that means you're going to add two trees or two hundred trees. And I think the board should have an understanding. If I'm being tasked to implement, if you will, the board's condition of the approval, I think they need to have some, they need to have some understanding of how you're going to react to that comment. Do you have any response to that?
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Now, I understood your comments. We, you know, as far as the the planning areas, we agree with your locations that you indicate on your review letter. You know, we were doing this, you know, we will be providing, you know, a minimum. Is that probably the route we want to go with? Additional trees to provide?
I'm not, I'm sorry, what's the question?
So if we went with like, there's six locations on here, say I had twenty more trees to each and and plant. Obviously, the trees are the more important thing because it comes up with the the tree locations and and the replacement calculations. But we were looking to essentially work on each area on its own and provide trees. Say, put a minimum of a hundred more trees in. While working with you on on potentially more.
I mean, I I would defer, I'd leave that to the board. Again, my my recommendation in my report was that you should, there are there are opportunities to add landscaping in these. Well, first, starting with the fact, you know, that the the site is landscaping plan is deficient. At least significantly, as far as the calculations in the ordinance. I was identifying six locations, and I recommended that you come prepared with, you know, not exact landscaping plan, but some giving the board some idea of how and quantities with exhibits, how you're going to address it. And then I could, if the board approved it, make sure that you your the plan is consistent with that. I don't, I have to leave it to the board if the board is comfortable with what you just testified to, a hundred trees, and you'll break it up somehow. I so I hate to paraphrase your testimony like that, but I think it's essentially what I heard. Again, I'll leave it up to the board to decide if that's sufficient or not. So I'm gonna move on to comment two. The other comment was that the design standards indicate that loading docks are supposed to be designed in such a way that are out of sight. Essentially, that's paraphrasing what the requirement is. And you have located the loading docks a sufficient distance from the road. It's fifty-two feet from Belmont. And I, in in my opinion, more importantly, from Elizabeth, which I think is probably the more, for lack of a better word, sensitive road, because it's more open to use by the general public. It's two hundred feet plus from Elizabeth. But nonetheless, it faces Elizabeth Avenue. You have a detention basin between Elizabeth and the loading area. So I'd indicated that you should make some effort to add additional screening between between Elizabeth and the loading area. And and also adding it behind the whatever it is now, if it's an S T S or Mavis, I forget what it is now. Do you have a response to that comment? I don't believe you testified to that.
Yes, we will provide initial plantings along Elizabeth Avenue frontage to screen out the the loading dock, as well as what you indicated. A fence in adjacent to the Mavis or the tire, which we would agree to do as well.
Mr. Kavinsky, can you turn your camera back on?
I'm sorry.
No worries. Thanks.
And yeah, in terms of the landscaping, do you have any? And is, could you provide any indication of the location, the type, the size, the quantities?
So we will provide a mixture of evergreen deciduous trees along the Elizabeth frontage, Elizabeth Avenue frontage. Supplemented to to fill any holes that we currently don't have on the plan currently.
All right, does the plan allow, does the engineering for the for the basin allow you to add any between the loading area and and the basin itself?
The the issue with the that area is the D R C C is really as far as breaking up impervious coverage into the basin, try to do unconnected impervious coverage where it flows directly into the system. So the issue I see with that is putting in between the basin and the loading spaces themselves is the fact that it'll be overland runoff into the basin in those locations. So we don't want to impede the runoff in that in that spot.
Okay, so you'd recommend that that you're so you're gonna to respond to that comment, you're gonna concentrate on adding a combination of deciduous and evergreen trees along the frontage of Elizabeth Avenue.
Correct.
Okay.
But, Mr. Kavinsky, can there also be some additional landscaping between the detention basin and our driveway?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lanford, for adding that. On the issue of sidewalks, you know, I just for the board's edification, I I did write this report prior to the conversation that the board had on the other application on the other side of Belmont. I think my comp, my recommendation would still stand in that basically what my recommendation says is I think the most important street for the provision of sidewalks is certainly Elizabeth Avenue due to the proximity to basically other pedestrian generators. And then I indicated in, in my opinion, decreasing order of priority would be along Wiley Drive, and then third would be Belmont. And again, I thought that Wiley Drive would be the second priority because it connects to Elizabeth. And then again, Belmont being a little bit further away. That does not preclude the board from, that's my recommendation. That's my order of priority, in my opinion. I'm anticipating that the board may discuss whether sidewalks should be provided along Elizabeth. And also whether it should be provided along one or both of the other two streets.
And if I, if I may re respond to that comment, because obviously I was here a couple weeks ago. When we did the application at the intersection of Schoolhouse and Belmont. And as a result of that application, there was a requirement that sidewalks be constructed along Schoolhouse. They were not required along Belmont. There was a contribution required. My client is willing to discuss and and there is agreeable, obviously, to constructing sidewalks on Elizabeth Avenue. We did not discuss the other, we did discuss internally the other two streets. I did indicate that at the meeting two weeks ago, Mr. Brown seemed to be interested in sidewalks along Belmont. And if the board is so inclined to require them, we would be happy to construct them. With respect to Wiley Drive, I'm gonna ask Mr. Kavinsky if there are some practical difficulties with providing sidewalk along Wiley and let him respond to that.
So along Wiley, we do have some steep slopes on the adjacent to the right of way, so it would be a challenge a little bit to to get a sidewalk in there. As well as the corner of the property, obviously, we do not own, it being the funeral home. So that would be a disconnect in the sidewalks that we did provide it over there as well.
So for for the record, it, I was anticipating the question. I did discuss it with my client, and I, you know, indicated the discussion that took place a couple weeks ago. Although it is not shown on the plan, we would be happy to construct sidewalk, and and the board's gonna have to make a decision. From our driveway down to Wiley. Mr. Kavinsky, beyond the driveway is a is a wooded area, is that correct?
That's correct, yes. Whatever we're maintaining.
And our plan was not to disturb any of the wooded area south of our driveway.
That's correct.
And just so the board understands, if we, and we have no objection doing it, but if we were to extend the sidewalk the entire frontage of our property along Belmont, that would require the removal of some part of that wooded area, correct?
Yes, yes, a few trees, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So so Peter, we probably leave this issue. I just wanted to just remind me, because I wanted to be consistent with your other application. Where I I think you know, we we certainly, Elizabeth Avenue, obviously. There are multiple applications, right, that are up ahead for us where we want sidewalks on Elizabeth. That makes a lot of practical sense. I can't remember whether in your last application joining this, we we said no to Belmont and we took the contribution instead. But I just want to make sure that whatever we do, if it's, if you can remind me, it makes sense, and it's it's not disjointed.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that last comment. I had a little difficulty. Can you repeat that, Mr. Orsini?
Sure, I I just want to make sure that it's consistent with your other applica- application and that the sidewalks are not disjointed, you know.
Yeah, and let's let's start with Elizabeth Avenue. Elizabeth Avenue, there is a sidewalk in front of what is now Mavis Tire. So if we construct the sidewalk along the entire frontage of our property, that would link up with its sidewalk in front of Mavis, and I believe there is also sidewalk along the shopping center that's on that side of the street. The other side of the street, Belmont, there are no sidewalks at all in that area. When we discussed the application two weeks ago, the board indicated that we did not have to build the sidewalk on Belmont. And it was also brought up that this application was coming down the road. We were required to contribute on that other application for the for sidewalk for sidewalk contribution to the municipality. Again, in discussing it with my client, if the board were inclined to want sidewalks on Belmont, we'd be, we would be happy to provide them. But again, we just wanted to point out that it would require the removal of some trees. And I get, and again, for logistical reasons and grading reasons, we don't feel that the sidewalks are appropriate. On Wiley, and quite frankly, on Wiley, across the street from us is the fire company, so you don't generate employee foot traffic from there. There is a manufacturing facility on the corner. But there is not a lot of foot traffic, as the board aptly pointed out. My office was at that corner for many, many years. And in all the years that I've been there, I I never saw any foot traffic. So I I don't know if sidewalks are either A appropriate or necessary along Wiley.
Okay, thanks, Peter. That that whole outline was very helpful.
I'm sorry, Mike, again, I didn't hear you.
Sorry, I said that whole outline was very helpful. Appreciate it.
So just to clarify a little bit more, the the application that was discussed last week was on the opposite side, opposite side of Belmont. So, you know, basically for that application, because it didn't connect to any adjoining sites, the board decided to basically take the payment in lieu. I think it would be a correct characters characterization to say that in when the conversation moved a little bit to this site and the conversation about sidewalks in the this area as a whole, because this application wasn't before you, the board basically hunted to tonight to decide whether sidewalk should be provided on this side of Belmont. Is is, Mr. Lanford, would you agree that that would, that's a correct characterization?
That that's what was, I think, raised by Mr. Brown and then also raised by Mr. Orsini, that we would discuss some sidewalks on this side of Belmont. And again, if the board wants them, we would be happy to provide them.
I I just wanted to make again that clarification that the the fact that the board decided not to have it on that other application, it was indeed on the other side of Belmont. So the facts are slightly different. So I'll just move on.
Could I get a clarification? Elizabeth Avenue. Talking about a sidewalk going south past Mavis. Talking about a sidewalk going south past Mavis Tires, to Mavis Tires, to the new driveway, Happer, Helper, whatever it is, I've seen it pronounced, spelled different ways. What about the, I don't know if you're aware, because you were probably the attorney on it, maybe not, but there's an approval on that, for that property that is not part of this application. At the corner of where you're going to have the new street, Harper. There's a 6,000 square foot retail center that got approved years ago, never got built. I don't know the status of it. But sidewalk on Elizabeth Avenue would be nice to go and make the connection to the Franklin Commons Shopping Center. And the other issue with that is whether that approval on that property is, still exists or not, does it affect how the street, the new street that you want to build for your driveway, you know, might have some effect on, on how you build that. Because there would be buildings on part of one side of it. I don't know if that's even still an approval. It was a number of years ago.
I'm drawing a blank what site you're referring to.
The corner on the left, that's in white, on the map, on the, on the projection that's on the screen. On the Elizabeth Avenue corner, this corner right there, next to Mavis Tires, on the other side of the new driveway.
Of Happer Street.
Yes, that property has an approval for a retail center from a number of years ago.
I remember.
Okay, I don't know what the status of it is now, but has that been taken into consideration? I for one am, I like in general this application, but I am absolutely thrilled that you're not having trucks going through this particular driveway. Because I think it would have a severe impact on Shoprite. You have two shop, two signal, traffic signals there. You have a lot of people traffic in there. I don't think tractor trailer traffic belongs in that driveway. So I'm happy that you're proposing it be only for automobiles. This driveway could be in conflict with the Shoprite driveway at the light and the Franklin Commons driveway at the light also. There's only about 100 feet separating them. But anyway, I'm not clear. I don't know if you have taken into consideration or if it matters about the approval on that property that hasn't been built yet. It also, though, having that approval strengthens having sidewalks there.
Again, Mr. Thomas, I have a vague recollection of that approval. I think there were numerous applications over the years for a small commercial center on Elizabeth Avenue. I don't know what has happened to that application. But what we're doing doesn't in any way, if it was ever to be built or resurrected, it would impact that. I mean, what we're doing is improving Happer Street, which is a public right of way. And then we're going to basically have that driveway at the end of Happer Street be, as you indicated, just a driveway for vehicles, or if there is a FedEx truck or a small delivery vehicle, they can use that driveway. But our tractor trailer traffic will be all focused away from that. And again, along the entire frontage of our property, we will be providing sidewalks there to continue what you as a board have implemented with respect to the retail zone and also, I think, the application that you adopted the resolution for this earlier this evening, which was heard, I believe, back in February, required sidewalks again on that side of Elizabeth Avenue. So I think, you know, we're doing what the board sort of directed us to do on, as a result of prior applications and hearings.
Okay, I just want to clarify and make sure that there is no impact. It would have been nice if Helper Street or Harper Street was existing then, when that was being approved, because that was a very tight site. Would have given them a different access point to get trucks loading, delivery trucks loading things in the back of their center as opposed to all their driveways fronting on Elizabeth Avenue. The other thing, I, I would like to see a lot more, even though it's not going to be a well-traveled street, but a lot more street trees on Wiley, particularly around the driveway. It seems I can count four trees there, and it seems like a very small number for a lot of space.
And Mr. Haley did point that out in his report. That was in, that was one of his areas of focus that we should look at putting more trees in. And Mr. Kavinsky indicated that, you know, it appears there's room to put in all of the areas that are set forth on page three of Mr. Haley's report, at least 100 more trees. And many of the areas that were pointed out in Mr. Haley's report are areas along Wiley Drive.
And then the final thing, thanks for bearing with me, is at the meeting a couple of weeks ago, on that other approval and the sidewalk discussion, it seemed to me very clear that at that point, I was, I wanted the sidewalks on Belmont in front of this property because they can eventually go to the corner of Schoolhouse. And there's a further connection around the corner to, that can be made to the shopping center. So put them in. Your applicant is willing to do it. As far as I'm concerned, build it.
That's why I discussed it with him, Mr. Thomas, and we'd be happy to do it.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask the engineer, he had indicated that there were grade issues on Wiley. Is that existing grade? Proposed grade? Because you're basically regrading the entirety of that road frontage. So why can't, why can't you, in doing that regrading, accommodate a sidewalk?
So it is, it's a combination of these two. Wiley does drop very quickly down to that intersection of Belmont and Wiley. But the, the proposed basins we have currently are in that area as well. So it would require, you know, some significant regrading in that allocation as well as the overgrading of the roadway that's making it work.
Yeah, Mark, I'm not too concerned with sidewalks on Wiley. I think Bob makes the persuasive argument for Belmont. I'm sure Charles would support that. We all agree Elizabeth Avenue is a no-brainer. I'm not, and I think Peter outlined why it didn't make a lot of sense for Wiley, so I'm not, I'm not too concerned about, I don't think we need to pursue that issue too much about the slopes, et cetera. Because I don't, I don't know that it would be serve any benefit. But I think Belmont, in Elizabeth, makes sense. The applicant's willing to do it. And I think that ultimately, with the input from the other side of Belmont, they'll eventually be able to be a connection. You know, as Bob Thomas pointed out. So I think, I think we're good there. I mean, we can have more discussion about it, but I mean, that sounds pretty reasonable to me. Did you, Mark, before we go on to any of the board comments, did you have any other comments on your report that you wanted to point out to the board?
I'm sorry, Mike, was that a question to me?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Well, first, I just wanted, just so you understand, the reason why I asked the question about the grading is, the original response was, there's a grading issue. And I thought the engineer needed to explain what that was so that the board can make a fully informed decision on that. Comment five. Again, talking about the design standards, it indicates that you need to make an effort to explore opportunities for landscaping within the interior of the parking lot. Have you looked into that? And are there opportunities or are there reasons why you cannot do that?
We can provide interior landscape islands within both parking lot areas.
Okay, and then you had indicated that you would provide some type of drop-off area for ride hailing services. Can you provide just some description of kind of how and where that would be done?
Yeah, so we obviously, you know, near the parking lot areas where the entrances are, in one of the open space areas just adjacent to the building, to allow people to sit and wait for their ride to come up and pull up for a space and pick them up.
Okay, and would that negatively affect your parking count in any way?
I believe we still have room as far as the requirement goes, but I think we have 10, 10 or so stalls. We're over it anyway. And we do have some additional area we can locate those in. So we shouldn't be, we shouldn't have an issue moving any parking.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Max. Other board comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a number of things. Just going back to what Mr. Thomas brought up, I think that the the feeling when we considered the property at the corner of Belmont and Schoolhouse was, well, we didn't require a sidewalk on the, in front of the warehouse we just approved further north on Belmont. So it wouldn't be very functional to require one on the Belmont and Schoolhouse property. But we would have a chance to require one on this property where it came in. And we have the possibility of requiring sidewalks the rest of the way down to Schoolhouse on this side of Belmont. So I would support the idea of having sidewalk on Belmont. And I'm sure if Mr. Brown were there, he would support it very strongly. Mr. Kavinsky, you mentioned electric charging stations, but I didn't catch whether you were going to provide them or not. I really think you should.
We indicated we would, Dr. Chase.
Good, good. What I'd suggest is you have, say, a pair of charging stations. They typically come two to one stand in each of the parking lots on the north and south sides of the building. But also wiring to put in more if, say, in 10 years' time, as all the movement is, there's a much more significant number of electric vehicles. Then it will really be important to employees to have, by then perhaps, ten charging stations. You wouldn't need that many now, but it's always easier to put in the wiring for them when you're initially developing the building. A strong suggestion. A really small point. Your demolition plan shows a lot of trees to be taken out. I noticed one that is on the frontage on Greeley Street, which I guess is a paper street, but it's close to the frontage there. It would seem to me could be saved. Your landscaping plan shows planting new trees there on the edge of the detention station. I always argue for saving existing trees wherever possible because they're good sized right at the time you build as opposed to waiting 10 years for new trees to become good sized. I wondered, a point that the Environmental Commission made, have you considered previous pavement for the light vehicle parking areas? To allow more rainfall to soak into the ground.
So what we've done as far as those areas toward the south is we've basically only curb cuts the entire way of the parking lot to allow the stormwater flow directly into grass swales.
Okay.
They are tributary to that. So yeah, so we're providing a benefit by doing that.
What about on the north side?
North side, very similarly, we're, I believe we have curb cuts along the driveway as well as the loading docks adjacent here. Again, anywhere, the reason why we didn't put it on this side is due to the slope to the basin area. So we did it everywhere. We thought it made sense to do it to break up impervious coverage to go directly into the system so they don't go into pipes. And to provide that unconnected benefit to DRCC definitely promotes.
Okay. What is proposed for the area along Wiley Drive to the east of the driveway from Wiley Drive? Open space there. Do you have anything in mind for it?
I believe we've got a berm area there. And I believe in additional plantings in that location. It's a bermed up area. So again, block some of the visual effects.
Yeah, okay, yes, I did see there was a a rise in contour, four or five feet there.
Correct.
And you're going to, you have one very small wetland, but you're going to have to get permission from the DEP to fill it.
Correct, yeah, we're currently pending that application now with the DEP.
Yeah, your detention basin on the Wiley Drive side, and you show a, an emergency spillway essentially goes onto Wiley Drive. Are there, is there a stormwater drain along Wiley Drive or will it just go onto Wiley Drive?
So again, it's an emergency spillway, so that's kind of the last resort spot if we go there. And the intersection is where all the others are. The issue is that if we put the spillway towards the intersection, there's a very steep slope there. So I'd rather have it gently go down Wiley versus a steep slope area.
Okay, and yeah, I saw that there were inlets at the corner of Belmont. And I guess if we have that much rain, people aren't going to well, the root of the point, the fire truck might have to go out even in a heavy rain, even in a hurricane.
And again, we have an alley structure that ties into those inlets correctly with an overflow on that. So the emergency spillway is, it should be utilized. Really, it really should all go through the alley structure.
Okay. Okay, I I think that's everything that I had. Oh, I just, there's a lot that Mr. Thomas talked about. I too remember approving that. And as I recall, the northern end of that has some wetlands that would probably was rather constraining on the driveway onto the larger portion of that site. Would probably prevent development on the Happer Street end. I'm sort of interested, how come you're buying out the house on Happer Street? Because you don't seem to be using that property, you're just removing the house. Does the owner want to sell?
I did refer to you.
Yeah, I, which house are you talking about, Dr. Chase? The house behind the tire place?
Yeah. Well, I thought the tire place was the other side of Happer Street.
I'm sorry, that's the house behind the shopping?
Behind the shopping bit that hasn't been constructed.
Yeah, we, I don't think my client ever attempted to acquire it because it really was not necessary for his project. The houses on Elizabeth Avenue were for the stormwater management, so we acquired those houses.
But apparently your client But apparently your client did acquire it and proposes to remove the house there. And I dimly remember, because I didn't go look at the property again, uh, this time, it was really a rather interesting brick house, but it'll be it. I was just wondering why, if you knew why, it apparently has been acquired.
Well, when, when we initially started this project, uh, it was the redevelopment of the warehouse site, um, the old Wiley building. Uh, when we first met with staff, uh, the staff indicated that there were non-conforming uses, uh, to with houses that are in the industrial zone, uh, and at that time it was in the M-zone before the rezoning, and they recommended, and they said it would be nice if, uh, we can get rid of those houses and get them out of the industrial zone, especially if you were going to build a warehouse, which we were entitled to do behind them, which is larger than the one that currently exists. So my client did set about and, and did go about acquiring all of those properties, partially on the recommendation of staff and also because obviously, uh, you really would want to get rid of the houses near the, a larger warehouse.
No. Okay, I was just curious. Uh, no further questions. Thanks.
Thanks, Ted. Anybody else on the board have, uh, any questions or comments?
Oh, I didn't get an answer about the tree on Greeley Street.
I, I guess we can look at, I don't know if that tree can or cannot be saved, but I think we can look at it, Dr. Chase, and if it can be saved.
All I can ask is that you look at it. I know oftentimes, uh, there's a change of grade that it's felt would be bad for the tree, but cutting it down is even worse for the tree.
If, if, if it can be saved, we would be happy to save it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark. If I can ask, um, Peter a question, Peter Vignolo a question. Happer Street, so it's going to serve no other property than this development, and the, and the first, basically 100 feet of their, of that driveway is going to be a township road, which presumably means the township would be responsible for plowing it, repaving it, et cetera. And again, it serves nobody else but the applicant. Um, so my question is, absent vacating it, and if, again, I understand there's property owners, other property owners to either side, which complicates things, is there another solution to that, like a development agreement or some other type of arrangement whereby the applicant would be, would be made responsible for maintaining that road?
Well, I, I guess we're, it's twofold. You're starting with the premise that it doesn't benefit anybody other than the applicant. So.
It ends at their site.
It does end at their site, but if it were improved, I think Mr. Thomas indicated previously that it might provide additional access points to the back of the property that's the corner, and it also abuts the Mavis tire side. So I, I guess certainly you can look into discussing with the applicant what you want to do. I mean, it's, it's a roadway that's listed on a tax map that can be improved, so it's not vacated, it's there, so, you know, it, it's a, it's a bit of a sticky wicket when it comes to how you're going to handle it. They're, they're coming in and saying they're going to improve the roadway. And I mean, I, I guess what municipal services you've had, you, you would have plowing. Um, I don't know if the applicant would want to agree to undertake plowing to provide access. I mean, from a practical perspective, the plowing of Happer Street, I would imagine, as far as municipal priorities go, um, wouldn't exactly be at the top of the list.
I, I, we have, we have a, a, a staff member of DPW on this, so we want to, we may want to chime in here.
I mean, uh, you know, Mr. Halke, I, I, I don't know, you know, we're, we're prioritizing how, how the township tasks its, uh, you know, resources, the, the 100-foot street that only provides access to a, um, a warehouse, I don't know if that's at the top of the list.
Uh, no, it would not be on the top of the list. It, it would be along the lines of somewhere, uh, the tertiary streets, which are considered cul-de-sacs in town.
Right.
Um, it would be one of the very last streets that would, um, get plowed. And where to put the pla, where to put the snow would be another concern, because obviously, um, now we just plow it to the dead end, uh, to provide access to the one-house driveway.
Okay.
Um, if, if you can, if the, the street isn't going to be vacated, I would, I would recommend some kind of developer's agreement or kind of agreement, because all it is is a glorified driveway. Um, you know, they're going to improve it to, to benefit them to have access to whatever, um, you know, employee parking lot, and that's fine. Um, you know, the street should be vacated, and the other half should be bought out by, you know, from, from Mavis, if you want to take that. As far as Mavis benefiting from the street, it's, it's absolutely zero, because they have a significantly high retaining wall on that side, which would be the north side of Happer Street, um, which I'm guessing is at least five or six feet tall, so they would never use, have any type of access, um, from their property.
And the other side of the site's wetlands.
And it, even on the site plan, it shows, uh, delineated wetlands, uh, which I'm guessing is a drainage swale or ditch, um, to the south side, which connects down towards older runs of growth. Um, you know, if, if that's something that should be looked into, uh, if, if Peter would agree to that, um, that would be.
I say, Peter, what's, any, any input from your client on that?
I, I don't believe my client would have any objection to plowing that street, uh, and entering into a developer's agreement with the town agreeing to, to plow it, uh, when it is necessary in the winter time. So, uh, you're right, it probably will only benefit us, but, but quite frankly, you know, if Mavis didn't want the other half of the street, and we could have made it a private road, that would be fine, but we can't do that. Uh, and, and, and I do think, as Mr. Thomas pointed out, that this, this street slash driveway is, uh, integral to this project and, and important for vehicular traffic, uh, coming off Elizabeth Avenue. So, uh, we would be glad to plow it in the future once we improve it.
Mark, any other concerns? Thanks. I mean, that, that makes a lot of sense, like, otherwise I think it would be, um, kind of like what Carl said, so.
I, I got one other comment for, uh, Peter, if, if that's, if it's.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Um, Pete, I think you need to set up a meeting with the Water Division regarding your, uh, utilities, as far as water utilities on the property. Um, there's certain discrep, uh, there's some discrepancies in the existing plans and the proposed plans, and I just want to note that, uh, the utilities will not be coming off Wiley Drive, but we can go over that. If you want to, if you want to set up a Zoom call sometime in the near future.
I, I will have Mr. Kavinsky reach out, uh, to you to set up a Zoom call. I, I don't necessarily think I need to be on that call, but if you want me there, I'd be happy to be there, but I think it's probably you and, and our site engineer to talk about the utilities.
I'll reach out to you, probably.
Okay, and I have one, one other comment. As far as Wiley Drive, if there were to be sidewalks, and I think we're backing off for sidewalks on Wiley Drive, uh, they would have to be outside the right-of-way, because the existing water main runs in the landscape, or in the grass area just on the other side of the pavement, so we would not, uh, we would object to any type of sidewalks being directly over our water main, obviously for maintenance purposes.
Yeah, no, I don't see any for Wiley. I mean, I think, I think, I think in this case, the sidewalks are pretty, pretty well supported for Elizabeth and Belmont. And it's unfortunate that we have to lose some extra trees, um, on Belmont for those sidewalks, but on that side of the road and the access that it will ultimately provide, you know, for the, for the retail further down, um, makes, makes sense, um, and it, it, it makes, it makes things connected. And, you know, the trees can either be planted or it will be a contribution or whatever, so I mean, that, that's fine, um. I, I think that makes the most sense. Uh, and Carl, you make yet another, uh, another good point for why maybe Wiley isn't, isn't the best place there for sidewalk.
Okay. But that's all I have, Mike, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Anybody else? Board comments before we open to the public? As we're getting close to 10 o'clock, so we want to be cognizant, if folks are hanging on to make comments on this, we do that. All right, so here you are, the board comments at this time, um, I'll make a motion to open the meeting for, uh, public comment.
Second.
All in favor?
All.
The meeting is now open to the public for comment on this application. And Mark, if you know if anybody would like.
So again, to remind the public, if you're participating via WebEx, you can do the raised hand function, uh, and, or if you're calling in, you could press star three. Since, uh, we're entertaining both questions and comments, uh, we will ask you to state your name, spell your last name, and indicate your address, and the board secretary, I'm sorry, the board attorney will give you. So again, uh, star three if you're calling in, or the raised hand function if you're participating via WebEx. Mr. Chairman, I am giving a little bit, we do have some members here, but are, I'm not seeing anybody raising their hand. So I, I, it looks like we don't have any takers, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thanks, Mark. I'll make a motion to close the meeting with your public comment.
Second.
All in favor?
All.
Um, do you have any, any final thoughts you'd like to make? Peter, if you're trying to talk, I'm good.
Were you stating to me, Mr. Arsenio? I, I didn't hear you.
No, I said, is there any final, um, comments or summation you'd like to make?
Sure, uh, just very briefly, uh, I, I, I'm going to rely on my unpaid planner, Mr. Healy, to justify the variances, uh, for the driveways and rely on the testimony that he gave in the previous application. Uh, but I, I think the case has been made by Mr. Paragoy as to why, uh, the additional driveways are appropriate in this case. I mean, we have an extremely large site, and actually, the opportunity to provide those driveways is a benefit, uh, and there is no detriment, uh, in providing those driveways, as it provides for safety. Uh, again, uh, we would be happy to work with, um, Mr. Healy to make sure that we enhance all of the landscaping that he requested be enhanced in those areas, uh, and get as many more trees back on the property, uh, that we can. And other than the driveway variance, we are a conforming application, uh, we meet all of the other bulk standards, and we respectfully request that the driveway variance be granted and the site plan, uh, approval be granted, and I thank the board for their, uh, time and consideration.
Thank you, Peter. Any other board comments, uh, before, um, we entertain a motion?
Mike, at the appropriate time, I could lay out some, um, a summary of what the applicant has agreed to, which might help form a, a motion.
Okay, um, well, that sounds good. We need to have somebody make something first, and then, you know, you could help them, uh, fill, flush it out. All right, I guess I'll do this again, since I don't want to, I'm being here till wait five minutes for somebody else to make a motion. So, um, I'll make a motion to approve the application with the driveway variance. Um, um, with the sidewalks, uh, to be installed by the applicant on Elizabeth and Belmont Drive, uh, in compliance and will comply and satisfy all outside staff reports. And, um, indicated by the testimony tonight, um, how they intend to satisfy or, or have satisfied, um, internal staff reports, um, including, um, you know, a little more detail on the, on this, on this management plan. Uh, Mark, anything you'd like to add to that that I missed?
Yeah, I'll just quickly go through it. So they agreed to indicate, uh, provide more landscaping in those six areas in my report, um, in the form of a total of one, at least 100 trees. With respect to, uh, the screening along Elizabeth, they would provide a fence behind the, um, S, uh, the Mavis, this STS, again, whatever it is, they're also going to add more landscaping in the form of deciduous trees and shrubs along Elizabeth and along that driveway, um. It will add landscape islands, uh, in the middle of the parking, in the parking lots. Uh, they will add the drop-off areas, um, for the ride-hailing services. They'll provide, um, a, a pair of, uh, electric vehicle charging stations, uh, one at each, uh, entrance, um.
Oh, each.
A development agreement, they'll, they'll work out, work it out with the township before a development agreement with respect to the, the maintenance, uh, and plowing of Happer Street. Uh, they're going to burn, they're going to landscape the berm at the corner. And that, those are my notes.
Okay, I will, uh, I will amend my motion to this, um, this condition. Which we're broadly hinted at, my initial motion, but that's certainly, uh, certainly answered.
The charging station should be in the, uh, light vehicle parking lots. Not just at the entrance.
Okay, that's my, that's my amended motion with the specifications that Mark and Ted just provided.
Second.
Hey, we have a second for Mr. Brown, so Christine, can you pull in for?
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Howes?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Carl Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Carol Schmidt?
Yes.
And Chairman Arsenio?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Night, dear.
Mark, uh, any other business we have right now?
Nope.
Okay, if not, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
All.
Hi.
Virtual gamble, and, uh, I guess we'll see everybody, uh, per Wednesday and Monday.
Nice.
Sounds good. Good night, everybody.
Okay.